Now we're calling to order. I'm gonna have Councilman Harper Buchanan lead us in invocation and pledge. So stand where you are and. Councilman Buchanan.
Let us pray. Our gracious heavenly Father. We come this morning petitioning. God throwing up. Of grace. First of all, thank you. For allowing us to see another day. We pray, Father, that you continue to take us on this tedious journey. Father. When times are perilous times. We ask, Father, that you guide. The scientists. The medical experts. To take us over through this COVID nineteen. Only you, Father, can do that. No politician. No one else can do it but you, Lord. But God them know. We had polio years ago. And you started to do that. You can do it, Lord. And I trust in you. Forgive us, Father. There are many sins that we have transgressed against you. Father, thank you for dying on the cross for the remission of sin. And rise with all power in your name. Now, Father, as we get ready to go into the city council meeting. Grant us. Strength. Wisdom, courage, knowledge, and conviction. To go about the business of the city. Father. Lead us and guide us from one good grace unto. Be forever grateful to you. And give you praise and glory. The honors already yours. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our prayers allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the flag. Nine states of America. To the Republic from which it stands. A nation under God. Invisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Liberty.
Right. Next roll call. Sandy, you'll see that all council members are present. Item four is approval of the minutes of the July seventh, two thousand twenty meeting. Those minutes were emailed out to you. And so there are no additions or corrections to the minutes. They will stand approved as read. Item five, no proclamations. Item six, invitation for public comment. Uh, that email was sent out, press release sent out, so if anyone had a public comment, they had the opportunity to. Email or call. And that would be read uh on the items under first reading. First reading, one is consideration of an ordinance to close and abandon a portion of an alley located between Walnut Park, Roland, and Prospect Streets. And Stan, give us information on that.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Uh, you have the materials for this closure and abandonment. Uh, as you can see in your packet, uh, we're closing a portion of this alley. Uh, this has been requested of the residents and we did receive an application and a petition from them to have it closed. There is a portion of the alley on the east side that we're gonna remain. Uh, that's gonna remain open because there is a property owner that's served by that alley that accesses property from the rear. So, so we are closing a portion of this that is requested and we are recommending it to you.
Are there any questions?
Over the approval.
The second, Councilman Pretty.
I'll say just to clarify, the, the map standard referring to was. Keeping the section open, I believe, was that Mr. Dbury. Had requested.
Yes, it would be on the end um there he's, he would be two oh seven Roland. Um, he accesses the property from the back. And so it was requested that it remain open for him. So the end uh that's on the park side is gonna remain open.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Motion by Brooks, second by Taylor. So before we get to any further discussion, did anyone receive any communication for a public comment? No? Okay.
We did not.
Any further discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call vote.
Further discussion?
Pickens?
Yes.
Dodd?
Pickens? Dodd?
I'm okay here.
Okay.
He's giving a thumbs up.
Did you hear me? Going in and out.
Yeah, he's going in and out.
He gave a, he gave a thumbs up, Mayor, so I'm gonna assume that's.
Yes, for me, I'm not gonna hear me.
Thumbs up, thumbs down?
Okay, uh, Brooks?
Yes.
My thing going straight up.
Buchanan?
Yes.
Pretty?
Pretty, yes.
Taylor?
Taylor, yes.
Wallace?
Never you said that in down there.
McKelvey?
Yes.
Cisco?
Yes.
And vote passes unanimous. Item two is budget amendment for a Victims of Crime Grant. Now call on Bobby to give us information on that.
Thank you. Good morning. Uh, yes, this is a Victims of Crime Act grant. Uh, grant funds total forty-five thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. There's a twenty percent local match of eleven thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars. For a total of fifty-six thousand five eighty-four.
Move the approval.
Second.
Have a motion by Buchanan, second by Wallace. Uh, before we proceed, did anyone receive any uh public comments on this? Hearing done. Any questions or further discussion? All right, roll call vote. Pickens?
Yes.
Dodd? I see Dodd say yes, give thumbs up. Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Buchanan?
Yes.
Pretty?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
McKelvey?
Yes.
Cisco?
Yes.
All right, that vote passes unanimous. Item three is a budget amendment for a TVA JEIA Invest Prep Grant.
Yes, this grant is uh uh between TVA and JEA. It's a fifty-fifty grant that totals one hundred and seventy-six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, this would be used for some gas line work out at the industrial park on Highway two twenty-three. And the city would just serve as the pass-through agent on this particular grant, so no city fund. So move.
A motion by Cisco, the second, Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Okay, anyone receive any public comment from this? Hearing none. Any further discussions or questions? All right, call for the vote. Pickens?
Yes.
Dodd? Dodd, you're all the way frozen up now, I think.
Uh huh. He's at City Hall.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, yes. Brooks?
Yes.
Buchanan?
Yes.
Pretty?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
McKelvey?
Yes.
Cisco?
Yes.
And motion passes unanimously. Item four is a budget amendment for Tennessee Arts Access Grant.
Yes, this grant uh is for three thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. Uh, it does require a fifty percent match uh by the city. And what we plan to do is to reallocate what are currently budgeted funds for community relations. Uh, to serve as the match on this particular grant.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Pickens, second by Taylor. Had anyone received any public comment on this? All right, hearing none. Any further discussion or questions? All right, do a roll call vote. I'm gonna give one second. Let Councilman Dodd get all the way logged back in. All right, roll call. Pickens?
Yes.
Dodd?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Pretty?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
McKelvey?
Yes.
And Cisco?
Yes.
That vote passes unanimous. Item five is a budget amendment for Tennessee Arts Placemaking Grant.
Yes, this grant is for nine thousand dollars. It does require a twenty percent in-kind match from uh that will come from the parks and uh parks maintenance budget.
Move to approve the amendment.
Motion by Buchanan?
Second.
Second by Cisco. Is there any comments received on this?
Oh, but I have a question. What's the, what's the intent of uh? What's it, what will this be used for?
Um, if I may speak, Mayor.
Yes.
Mark Kirk, uh, this grant is for a mural downtown and it's also gonna have a workshop component in which. The artist that's leading the project is gonna work with some. Uh, youth from maybe Boys and Girls Club and Keep My Hood Good on engaging them in mural design and just showing them the arts profession.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mike, what, I have a question, if I may, is, is. So uh, that person's, the grant is for that person's salary?
No, part of it is for like design fees and. The services she provides and then part of it is for materials.
And what's the professional fee?
The artist's fee, I believe, is uh six thousand of that and that includes, again, those materials and then. Three thousand is strictly for. Like renting a lift and paint and all that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any additional questions? All right, roll call vote. Pickens?
Yes.
Dodd?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Buchanan?
Yes.
Pretty?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
McKelvey?
Yes.
Cisco?
Yes.
And passes unanimous. Next is a budget amendment for JPD Capital.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this budget amendment uh for the Jackson Police Department Capitol in total would be one hundred eighteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Uh, the police department uh needs eighty-nine thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars to replace. Uh, uh bulletproof vests and armored vests that will be expiring over the course of this year. Uh, they're requesting thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars to increase the number of body cameras and. Effort to try to have one body camera for each officer. And then finally, six thousand one hundred and thirty dollars to replace a uh computer server that has been deemed to be non-compliant. And we're at risk of not being able to communicate with the TBI and other agencies if we don't replace this particular server. So that's how the money would be spent. Uh, the money would be funded uh from the following sources. Uh, we recently received eighty-four thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. Uh, uh, an emergency dividend from Public Equity Partners. Uh, this dividend, this revenue was not budgeted, so we would be increasing our revenue budget to recognize that. Uh, we would also be using sixteen thousand dollars worth of uh. Capital funds that were budgeted for the new pothole maintenance equipment that's left over after we purchased that equipment. And then finally, we would need to use thirty-four thousand and fifteen dollars from our fund balance in order to complete the funding for this amendment.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Cisco, second by Dodd. Uh, did anyone receive any public comment for this? Are any additional questions?
Hey Bobby, on the uh, on the, the body cams for the police department right now, are they, aren't they in a situation where? Um, some of those cameras are not being fully charged because they have to change them out with the officers since they don't have enough, so we're, we're eliminating that situation, correct?
So what we have, what we have now, I'll answer that, is uh, we, we have cameras for every officer on duty. And so now what we're moving toward is having a camera for every officer that's on the street, so they'll have, it'll be their own personal camera, so. Uh, projections for the life, uh, expecting to last longer because they take better care of it, charging batteries last longer. Uh, so, so every officer that's on the street will have a camera as opposed to every shift officer having a camera.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Arnold mentioned that. The pothole machine is out of the purchase and we're using some money left over from that also. Is that correct?
Yes, so we uh. We ended up having to fix specs on a pothole machine, which uh. Were, which brought us in a little lower than what we anticipated and we originally budgeted for, so it was about sixteen thousand and some change. Are any additional questions?
What is the total request?
For, for this amendment, the total request is one hundred eighteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Okay.
Right, any, any additional comments or questions? And roll call vote. Pickens?
Yes.
Dodd?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Buchanan?
Yes.
Pretty?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
McKelvey?
Yes.
Cisco?
Yes.
All right, motion passes unanimous. Item seven is a consideration of an ordinance to amend the animal control ordinance for the city of Jackson. Y'all have a little deja vu, it's because uh this was on first reading last month. Um. Somebody, I won't mention his name, um, failed to ask for a motion in a second. And so uh, we have to, we voted on it, but we didn't have a motion in a second, so that's why it's back on the first reading, so um. Any, any questions?
You need a, you, you need a motion and a second today?
Well, I would like to have one, yes.
So move.
Back in packet.
Motion by Buchanan, second from Dodd? Any further questions or discussions? All right, count, roll call. Pickens?
Yes.
Dodd?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Buchanan?
Yes.
Pretty?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
McKelvey?
Yes.
Cisco?
Yes.
Passes unanimous. Move on to second reading. Item one is the proposed budget amendment in the amount of fifty thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars to fund the city's match for the Airport Economic Development Grant. This is passed on first. Who is the motion, Buchanan?
So move.
Second.
Motion, same motion by Cannon, second by Pickens. Any questions? All right, roll call. Pickens?
Hi.
Dodd?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Buchanan?
Yes.
Pretty?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
McKelvey?
Yes.
Cisco?
Yes.
All right, item passes unanimously. Item two is a proposed budget amendment in the amount of eighty thousand dollars to recognize the JPD award for JAG grant.
So move.
Move by Brooks? Second by Wallace? Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote. Pickens?
Yes.
Dodd?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Pretty?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
McKelvey?
Yes.
Cisco?
Yes.
All right, that vote is unanimous. Item three under second reading is a consideration of ordinance to close and abandon in their entirety. Porter Alley, Arnold Alley, and Lawler Avenue in their entirety. This is passed on first reading.
So move.
Move by Dodd? Second by Wallace. Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote. Pickens?
Yes.
Dodd?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Pretty?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
McKelvey?
Yes.
Cisco?
Yes.
Vote is unanimous. Item four under second reading is consideration of an ordinance to amend the text of the official zoning ordinance of the city of Jackson, Article Five, Specific District Regulation, Section thirteen, SC one, Planning Unit Commercial Development. District C, use permitted by adding type three climate self-storage facilities as a use permitted. And this item was passed on first reading.
So move.
Move by Cisco? Second by Wallace. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Pickens?
Yes.
Dodd?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Pretty?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
McKelvey?
Yes.
Cisco?
Yes.
All right, the vote is unanimous. Okay, um. New business item one is an update from CRA District One and District Two?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On the zone meeting, is it, any of the developers on the zone meeting of Mr. Powell?
No, I'll be giving the update.
Okay.
Unless you have specific questions and I can refer them to our master developers and get that to you later.
Go ahead, you go ahead and show.
Okay, um. I was asked to give an update on the CRA's redevelopment efforts in District One and District Two. Uh, District One, uh, our activities are majority are centered around uh new construction. Uh, we have residential new construction continuing to go on uh in the Morgan Street area. Um, also, we have two schools that are under construction. Uh, we have Madison and JCM that are both under construction and we're getting uh continual updates on that and we're making progress. Uh, in District Two. Uh, we have.
I was gonna tell if I've gotten your message, I will uh.
Uh, we have a uh continued residential development that's uh in the White Hall redevelopment area, which is around Dupree. We'll be building some new houses there with partnership with Southwest. Uh, we also, um, we contributed uh and participated with Lane College. Uh, and the improvements that were made, the Kirk and Doll Building over there, so that's one of the activities that's been ongoing and we've completed there. Uh, we also uh continue to look for other opportunities in District Two to uh, for other redevelopment efforts along Chester Street with commercial development. Uh, we have some uh residential development along uh Phillips, between Phillips and Cartmail. Uh, that is in the preliminary stages. Uh, we're waiting for them to submit their subdivision plat. And they'll be building some new construction there. We've also been in conversations with Michael Minor on building some new construction in the Mound City area and will be uh furthering discussions with him. I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you have uh concerning.
Mr. Chairman, my city. It's the roots where I was born and. Michael Minor, a longtime. President of that area. And a. General in the army has come home. He wants to redevelop the area. And uh, he has been meeting with Stan. We're happy to have that, but also David Hunt. Area Warren has a hundred and fifty acres, is that right, Mr. Powell?
Uh, he has some acres there along Roosevelt Parkway, uh, and uh, I know that they've been in discussions with a uh, a solar uh farm company to put some solar panels uh in that area. Uh, to provide electricity to uh the industrial prospect, uh, the industrial uses that are uh in the area close to that site.
What is, what are the plans for the old Lincoln School? Are they partnering with uh David Hunt on that?
On Lincoln? On Lincoln?
Old Lincoln School.
Uh. Mayor, I'm, I know that we're. Talking uh with uh some potential uses for that facility. I'm not aware of anything definite yet.
I, I think like with everything, we put a lot of things on hold.
Okay. But now, Lane has, is that correct?
Yes.
And uh. With respect to CRA Warren? Are they partnering with them like they did with the Kirk and Doll Center? I don't know.
Um, they, well, uh, of course, Lane, um, that project was in District Two, so District Two uh was the, David Hunt, uh, being the master developer. Brought that project with the Kirk and Doll Building uh to us. Uh, but I know that, that Hal has and Chris have, have been involved in uh talking with TXDA about some residential construction in, in the Lane area, so. So our master developers are working together, you know, redevelopment, even though we geographically define those districts as, as being one and two. Redevelopment efforts really doesn't have a boundary. It's, it's, it's seamless and we, we work uh throughout um the central part of the city and trying to redevelop and bring things uh and prove things up, so.
Want to mention also. And help me with the name, Mr. Powell. The new restaurant of White Hall.
Uh, the Americana Cafe?
Yes, it's a national chain. And Huddle House, uh, Mr. Hunter has told me. It's a new uh chain gonna come in there once we get the pandemic over.
Yes, sir, we. Yes, sir, we have been working on that, uh, that project, but as the mayor said, COVID has, has slowed a lot of things down in terms of. Uh, businesses look at expansions, they, they, they're kind of sitting on hold and waiting, but we do have some potential reuses for that Huddle House building.
I consider. Mr. Chairman, City Council. To be the central part of the city. And it's gonna stabilize sooner or later. Once we get this pandemic over, we're gonna see some things. Also, Mr. Chairman. And to the City Council. Uh. It's a little early now. But I want us to think about. The mall area. It's becoming a ghost town. Maybe the task force, consider business leaders, Chamber of Commerce, uh, those who know exactly what to do. Once the pandemic is over.
It's already been formed and having conversations right now.
You, you sounding good to me.
You know, I just try, I just try to add every day what, what Harvey Buchanan would do.
Lord have mercy, bless your heart. Okay, I'm through with that. Thank you, Mr. Powell. Thank you so much. Looking forward to that. And we're looking forward to the mall area. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Stan, could you speak uh briefly about uh? The financial stability of the CRA towards meeting their obligations uh in. Um. Uh, their contribution towards the Madison project in particular?
Um, the, right now, the, the CRA financially is stable. Uh, we're, we're able to make um the, meet the obligations that we were asked to meet. Um, there, the only, only thing that I would say, and, and again, um, um, you know, I know this is a uh, a sensitive time and we're looking at a lot of needs, but. Um, in terms of redevelopment dollars, we, we basically exhausted uh the monies that we originally had through Section one oh eight dollars and also. Some, some local capital money that we, we use to do public infrastructure and, and contribute to the projects that we've talked about, so. Going in front, going forward in the future, um, you know, as, as resources permit. Um, we would like to, to, to evaluate that again and see if we could, um, you know, uh, attach some other dollars to, to um those districts so that we can. Promote some other projects that, that, that have come about, uh, but, but we don't have the resources right now.
Mr. Chairman? If, if, if the council would permit me, if. Are all council members familiar with the CRA Community Redevelopment Agency? One and two. Council members?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
But, you know, concerning your questions, uh, we're, right now, you know, if, if all things um continue like they're going now, we, we haven't, uh, I don't see any problems with us being able to meet those. Obligations and again, uh, as I said, we receive uh constant updates on those schools and if you ever want to see some of that information, we can provide that to you.
Could, could you go ahead and provide us with the Madison construction updates? And uh, I know the school board has been forwarding some of those to. Could, could you go ahead and provide us with the Madison construction updates? And I know the school board has been forwarding some of those to, I don't know how many of us are getting them, but I've seen one or two of them. If you could just make that a regular occurrence, that'd be appreciated.
And I will. And, and I can also, if anybody is interested at any time, they can come in and, and I can log you into the, the company that provides us a video history and a pictorial history of all the construction from when they start moving the first scoop of dirt. So, so we've got a, you know, we've got a video documentary basically on how these schools are being constructed and at each stage. So I'd be happy to share that with you if you're ever interested in that.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions, discussions on that item?
And is there any way that you could email those, that video history to us or would we have to come in?
You'd have to come in. Those files are huge. And there, there'd be no way to, 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 to basically do that over mail. But, but again, and it requires a specialized login. So.
Okay.
But again, we will be happy to, to, to set up a time if anyone wants to come in and see that.
Okay. Assuming we can put a time lapse video together at the end of it is the intent potentially as well, right?
I think they'll, they could do something like that. But we can talk about that, you know, whatever the council desires to see, we can try to make happen.
Thank you.
All right, Stan. Item two is a consideration of appointment of Sharita Graham to the CRA board.
So move.
Second.
By Dodd, second by Taylor. Council, okay. All right, any discussion? All right, roll call vote Pickens. Pickens.
Yes.
Dodd.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Buchanan.
Yeah, she's in replacement of who?
She's in replacement of Neil Hudson. And then we, Neil Hudson and Willie Moore with last month and this month.
Yes.
Pretty.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Kelvin.
Yes.
Cisco.
Yes.
Motion unanimously passed. Item three, new business consideration of appointment for Jenna Helms to the Planning Commission.
So move for Jenna Helms.
Motion by Wallace.
Second.
Second, I think I heard Cisco first. Any discussion? Roll call Pickens.
Yes.
Dodd.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Buchanan.
Yes.
Pretty.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
McKelvey.
Yes.
Cisco.
Yes.
Item four under new business is a consideration of a contract with Waypoint Analytical for monitoring the Jackson Madison County landfill on Highway seventy.
This is a professional service contract and it's a one-year contract with four options to renew. And they provide annual sampling and testing at the old Madison County landfill post-closure. And the annual amount is sixteen thousand, eight hundred, eighty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents.
Ms. White.
Yes.
I, i- is this, I know we've been approving this annually. We had some discussion in the agenda review meeting about this being scaled back as we go, as we go from year to year. Is that, am I tracking on the right, on the right path there?
You're exactly right.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
So is that how the con, is, is that how the contract is going to read?
Yes, they just got, as you have in front of you, they have all the amounts that they need and all the services they will provide for this.
So as we go, as we go through time, those services would decrease as, so next year we could potentially expect a lower cost to do this type of service. Okay.
This has been going on for a long time. And of course, when we first started this, it was quite expensive. And as we're closing the landfill and monitor, monitoring and doing all the sampling, it comes to an end eventually.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Let, let me mention, these fees are nominal. If you go in White Hall, I got the state working on a project over there. Have, have, have anyone seen it? It don't cause the city to die. They're monitoring, they're cleaning it up. They put wells in. Have anyone seen it? It don't cause the city to die. This is a number.
These are good prices. This is a good company, company. They report the findings as they gather the information. So we've never had any trouble with them. Excellent company.
A move to approve.
Yeah, a motion by Taylor. Second by Brooks. Any further discussion? All right, Pickens.
Yes.
Dodd.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Pretty.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
McKelvey.
Yes.
Cisco.
Yes.
Passed unanimously. Item five is a consideration of a contract with Paris Creative Agency Marketing and Communication Services.
This is another professional service contract and I think Alex Ray is going to speak on this one.
Yes, this is a professional services contract. This is going to be mainly for some higher level intricate graphic design work for the website and social media. Should be working with communications also to kind of show us how to do that. So it won't be perpetual. These are going to come out of budgeted funds and it's going to be low dollar.
Hello.
Hello.
Real low. Yeah. We're talking about dollar wise, Alex.
The total amount that we're bu, we've budgeted two different buckets for marketing. One of them's fifteen thousand, one of them's ten. I can't imagine it being more than a couple for this. It's not going to take up the entire budget for the entire year.
Will be approval.
Motion by Brooks. Pretty, that's pretty.
Cisco.
Cisco, okay. Roll call Pickens.
Yes.
Dodd.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Buchanan.
Yes.
Pretty.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
McKelvey.
Yes.
Cisco.
Yes.
Thank you.
Unanimously. Item six is a consideration of a contract with Kim Lee Horn for engineering services.
He, this is a contract, like says Kim Lee Horn for engineering services. We've got Mr. Dusty Mays. He's a certified professional engineer. He's sort of going to fill the gap for us while we're in the search to replace the city engineer. And he's on here and he'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Alex, if you could speak just to how, or, or the mayor speak to how the integrated management of the department, I know that the city engineer managed that department. Have we probably came to those duties within the department and this, this particular individual, Mr. Mays will be providing, or his firm will be providing just the engineering services?
Yes, we, we divided up the, the managing of the department amongst the remaining employees. We have two engineers on staff in our engineering department. We just need for some certifications and questions of PE. And so Mr. Mays provides that opportunity. And then so any questions that they may have that require a PE to do, they'll be on call to provide those services.
Thank you. Move to approve.
Motion by Taylor.
Second.
Second by, I'm gonna say Wallace. I didn't know who the first one was. Any further discussion? All right, roll call Pickens.
Yes.
Dodd.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yep.
Buchanan.
Yes.
Pretty.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
McKelvey.
Yes.
Cisco.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Item seven is consideration of invoices over ten thousand.
So move.
Moved by Dodd. Second by Pickens. Any further discussion? All right, Pickens.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Councilman Taylor.
Alex, could you get back with me on what Big Toys is? The third line item down?
I'd be glad to. Yes, sir. I'll find out.
Okay, thanks.
Let us all know.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'll let everyone know.
All right, well, I'm gonna go back through because I lost my place on the, on the vote. Pickens.
Yes.
Dodd.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Pretty.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
McKelvey.
Yes.
Cisco.
Yes.
Our motion passes unanimously. Real quick, before we adjourn, I, I don't know what next month's meeting will be. As, as for right now, the governor's executive order to allow virtual meetings expires on August twenty-ninth. If he extends that executive order and we're still in the position that we're in with our case numbers, then we will probably come back to a virtual meeting. But as soon as I find out from the governor's office on what his intent on the, the executive order extension, I will let you all know. All right, nothing further. Meeting is adjourned.